Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the City of Casa Grande on October 18th. It's seven o'clock, and we will call this meeting to order. The first two items on our agenda are invocation and pledge. I'd ask that you please remain standing after the invocation for a pledge. And tonight, we have Pastor Juan Humes from the Kingdom Living Ministries Church to do our invocation. Pastor Juan.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to come here tonight. If you would be so kind, take a moment to quiet your spirit and allow the presence of the Lord to fall fresh upon us tonight. Bow your heads, close your eyes, but most importantly, open your hearts. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight. Thank you because you knew from the foundation of the world that we would be here. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for the many abundant blessings you have given us. You have given us blessings on blessings on blessings. And thank you for life itself, Lord, for the measure of faith and hope that we need to fulfill your calling in our lives. Thank you for the substance of friendship that you have given us. Thank you for the ability, yes, the ability to be involved in useful work in our community. Thank you, Lord, for loving us so much, oh, with bountiful love, with grace and mercy that goes new every morning and each and every day. We now pray for our mayor, we pray for all of those city leaders, and for the city council members. We ask that you give them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our time. We ask you to give them a sense of fair play and truth that's needed among all people. We ask you to give them a keen sense or thirst of justice and righteousness. We ask for a clear confidence in what is good and truthful and fitting. We ask for the ability to gather with harmony with honest disagreement. We ask and we pray for your peace and your joy to fill each of us and to fall fresh upon us this day. And now, dear Lord, as we come, we say to you, Lord, that thy will be done, and that we ask this in your precious Son, Jesus' name, knowing and believing that if we pray, believe and have no doubt, then what we pray for, your word tells us it shall be done. So according to your word, dear Lord, this thing is done, is done, is done, and the blessings, dear Lord, are coming, coming, coming. In Jesus' name we pray, in Jesus' name we pray, in Jesus mighty and matchless name we pray. Let everyone that loves the Lord say amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Pastor. Pastor Juan. Gloria, let the roll call show that all council members are present. Well, all of us except Donna are present, but Donna is present on the phone.
Mayor McFarland, concerning the minutes, I move approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from October 4th, 2021, and that we accept for the record the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes from August 3rd, the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes from September 7th, and the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from June 3rd, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 29th through October 12th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain, Mayor.
Okay, one abstention. Lisa Fitzgibbons. All right, item number E is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes from staff? Laurie?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone on the council? Any changes do you have? Donna, anything?
Never.
Okay. All right, seeing no changes, then I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, meeting agenda is approved. We do have a special presentation tonight, although I'm not sure we want to accept this resignation or retirement, but that's the good news. The good news is we're not going to accept your retirement.
So, tonight, we're honoring a local. So, tonight, we're honoring Corko. When I practice this. He was retiring at the end of the month with 26 years of service with the City of Casa Grande. I actually started with the police department as a community services officer, but became a police officer after about a year on the job. He's been a police officer since 2007. His personal file reflects a wide variety of special assignments he's had during his tenure, such as detective, school resource officer, field training officer, ID tech, involved in the police explore program. Were there any other jobs? He's only here on SWAT, very young. So, congratulations. A couple of assignments, Dan House, Mike has been leader in the Western Patrol Program, longtime and certified instructor, and he's also been an important part of the SWAT team. In fact, he was out at a recent time with the standing prayer night event, providing information on the air cat SWAT vehicle. Mike's another talent. Mike has another talent that he has used over the years to support the department and community events by being DJ, providing entertainment. So, Mike, on behalf of your fellow police officers, the city council, you know, citizens of the City of Casa Grande, whom you have served for the past 26 years, congratulations on your retirement. We're glad that you continue to be a part of the department in the reserve program, which is amazing. The best to you and your family. Congratulations.
It's been an honor, very quick, very fast career. Never thought this day would go so fast. It did, yeah. I said, no, continue. So, that was good, and I said, you came to retire. So, I don't plan on completely leaving, but thank you for the man staff for supporting me and pushing me along. Learned a lot, just to learn every day. It's been a great career, I love it, and you're just, you can use your own action. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could say a couple words?
Please.
I had the pleasure of working with Mike for about 20 of those years, somewhere in there, and Mike is, he's pro, he's a good officer, he is especially good with dealing with people. He's very compassionate and caring. He is a true law enforcement brother, and I know he'll be missed by all of his peers and staff. And, Mike, I wanted to add one thing. It may have been mentioned, and I missed it, but from the heart, your actions to the Tate Lynch family and to the Tate Lynch Memorial, that is, man, so above and beyond and really, really appreciated by so many. So, thank you for that, and I'll still see you around. All right.
Mayor?
Can I say something before you start the next part?
Yes.
Hang on. Yes, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I'd just like to echo the council member Huddleston, our former chief's comments. I had the privilege of having Mike as the SRO at Vilago Middle School, and he was without a doubt one of the finest staff members we've ever had. He was a role model for our students. He spent the time getting to know students on an individual basis, counseling students, supporting students. We established the Tate Lynch Award that we give out annually at Vilago with Mike's help as well. But you didn't mention one thing, that one year when the Bears went to the Super Bowl, Mike rapped for the entire student body by himself. So, Mike, I thought you should have done your retirement speech tonight in a rap. But thank you, Mike. It's been a real pleasure and honor to work with you as well.
Do you want to say something?
No. I just wanted to announce on the front row, okay, you're going to do it? Good. The mayor wants to introduce you, McKenna.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone on the council who would like to remove any of the consent agenda items? Donna, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, anybody from the community, public?
I move approval as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comments, but I did want to give a shout out to McKenna Powell. She is sitting in the front row. I had the honor of speaking to her class today, actually, all three classes at Ironwood, and I was going to talk about that in my reports, but this is open to the public, so I wanted to just give a public shout out, and thank you for being here. She's studying city government right now, and so that was kind of the topic that we had in her class. Great, great young people over at Ironwood, and it was fun talking to their class, so.
She kind of had it for the mayor, didn't you? Very happy to come tonight. She wanted to come and watch us tonight.
Tell your grandpa to quit embarrassing you.
See the mayor in action.
Quit embarrassing you. You're embarrassing her dad, grandpa. All right, so this is the public comment section. I did open the floor, so if there's anybody here, I do have one comment card from Nancy Wood. So Nancy, if you want to come up, give us your name and your address for our records, please. And then you have three minutes. We'll, it'll be on that little box there. It'll tell you when you need to wrap it up. And if you have anything that we need to follow up, we can give direction to staff, but we can't have a conversation about it because it's not on the agenda.
Well, thank you. My name is Nancy Wood, 513 East Beagle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And just some general comments that I wanted to follow up from one of my comments before regarding the burrowing owls that we have living here in the City of Casa Grande. I would like the city council members to think about the items that they're approving as they go through, approving developments that were growing here in Casa Grande, because we've got a number of burrowing owls that live in the city area that will be impacted by a lot of these growing developments that are coming through to the city. It's a good thing, but it means that the homes that they have are going to be displaced with new homes that we're going to live in, or businesses that are going to be there. And I was hoping that maybe the city council would consider looking at kind of habitat that would be maybe available for the burrowing owls to take over, that would replace what we're taking away from them. There are organizations such as Wildlife Rescues that would be able to advise on recommendations for things that might help them out in surviving what we're doing. There's also, I know, a group at ASU that is specializing with working with burrowing owls, and they would be a resource in guidance for finding good alternatives for them, because I know things like Quartzon Road and Cottonwood Road, there's many owls throughout the area that are going to be impacted by some of the road work that's going to be done with the sewer system on Quartzon and the interstate, maybe interchange that is being planned to be put in. There's numbers around Cottonwood and up by the hospital and such in different areas. And the only way to really find where they are is to have the developers that are going to be doing work, or the city that's doing work is doing a survey before they actually do something with the ground, so they're not impacted that way. You know, they're an asset to our city. You know, we have a lot of wildlife in the area. As I was coming here, there was tons of the turkey vultures, you know, going out for the night, and they're an asset to our environment, so I would hope you would consider protecting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And Nancy, we did put together some materials on that that we need to make sure we've shared with you, if you haven't seen them.
I have.
And then also, you need to give us your information so that maybe we can share that with the developers as they come in, and maybe you can help guide them. If there's a way to do that, or if you have contact information you could give to us for those organizations, and then we can make sure we get those in the hands of the developers before they start digging in the dirt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? I'm looking at you.
I just wanted to let you know you left your bag.
Oh, thanks, Richard. You can give it, no, he probably didn't want it.
Hey, the clock started. Richard Rosales, 462 West Casco Lakes Boulevard North. This is the only, one of the only council meetings where I don't have to make up a local address when I'm addressing the other councils in the other communities. I just wanted to share, you prompted my memory when you mentioned Ironwood School, and we have Ms. Powell here from Ironwood as well, and I wanted to bring up the fact that over fall break, APS officers, all, most of our officers team came down to do a beautification project at Ironwood School, a volunteer project. They put in some nice planters up front, they painted a nice mural with the help of Ms. Erica Herman, Mrs. Erica Herman, and something in the teacher's lounge. So, I don't know if you got to see it today, but very nice projects at Ironwood School. And the reason they did it was to honor the retirement of Daniel Fretcher, our president, who retired a month or so ago, and his daughter teaches at the school, and his grandkids go there. So, he has a fond place in his heart for that school, and we had 20 to 25 officers come down from Phoenix to volunteer and do that beautification project. So, it was just a very nice gesture. He was excited. It's a beautiful mural. Thank you. She did paint by numbers for our officers, just to paint it out, and we're very proud of that, so.
Richard, can you get us some pictures to our PIO?
Yeah.
And maybe a little story about it?
Yeah, I will.
We'll get that out there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate the support on the check charge program that was in consent agenda. We're excited to bring those electric car chargers to downtown Casa Grande to tie in with Lucid, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Richard. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? All right, seeing none, then, we'll close the floor, and we'll move to our first award of contracts, I1. Duane, you're in charge tonight, I see.
Yes. Staff recommends the mayor and city council award a contract to Ellison Mills Contracting LLC, Wilmig Joint Venture to provide the following tasks. Construction manager at risk pre-construction phase services in the amount not to exceed $119,640 for the construction manager at risk contract for construction of Thornton Road from Selma Highway to Peters Road. And the installation of associated undergrounding of San Carlos Irrigation Project Irrigation Drainage District facilities with a guaranteed maximum price of $1,661,411. The first component of this request is the approval for the pre-construction services contract. The intent of this is to arrive at a guaranteed maximum price for the Thornton Road widening project. The project will include widening Thornton Road from two lanes to four lanes between Peters Road and Selma Highway, a new traffic signal at Peters and Thornton, and a new sanitary sewer line along Peters Road. The city received five statements of qualifications from construction firms for the project. The selection committee ranked the firms using the following criteria specified in the RFQ: reputation, quality, and experience; ability to meet city's needs; personnel; approach to project management; and overall qualifications. The second component of this request for action is to include the award of a contract for materials, equipment, and labor required for the undergrounding of approximately 4,000 linear feet of existing facilities owned by the San Carlos Irrigation Project within the project vicinity. The primary reason for performing this work as part of this contract is to meet the deadline of the projected dry-up for these facilities, which will save cost. The secondary concern is the potential long lead for delivery of required materials. And with that, welcome any question?
And Duane, that's just for pre-construction costs, right? That's not any construction of the road?
It's nothing on the road, just the installation of that pipe.
Okay, so it's pretty much just the pipe? The San Carlos pipe?
And then arriving at the guaranteed maximum price.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a resolution number then, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5350. A resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting the proposal from Ellison Mills Construction LLC, Wilming Construction LLC, joint venture to provide construction manager at risk, pre-construction services for the Thornton Road Improvement Project, authorizing a guaranteed maximum price construction for Phase 1 of the project, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of contracts.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 5350 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is I2, ordinance number 3309.
Staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement with Empire Southwest in the amount not to exceed $74,984.59 for the purchase of one new model Massey Ferguson 4707 tractor for use in the city's airport operations division. The airport operations division maintains 640 acres of airport property in compliance with federal and state airport aviation regulations. The airport grounds include runway protection zones, airport infrastructure setbacks, drainage canals, and retentions, perimeter fence lines and service roads, airport ingress and egress, and undeveloped areas of airport property. Currently, the airport does not have equipment in its fleet to manage the ground maintenance, and it has struggled to keep up with the maintenance using various hand and power tools. The process is very labor-intensive and requires the lifting of large and heavy items, most often by hand. Equipment has been borrowed from neighboring public work divisions, but is not specified to perform the maintenance necessary at the city's airport. Having equipment specified for the job and available on-site to perform airport grounds maintenance will increase the safety and efficiency of airport staff, tenants, and stakeholders alike. Adding this tractor to the airport fleet will greatly improve the efficiencies of the division, reduce the hand lifting of larger and heavy items, reduce the likelihood of work-related injuries. The tractor would also improve employee morale and increase airport staff retention. With the additional tractor, city staff can manage the airport grounds maintenance issues. Staff has specified the build and obtained the cost of one Massey Ferguson 4707 tractor and attachments with Empire CAT in accordance with the terms and conditions contained in the City of Tucson contract, and the response thereto submitted by Empire Southwest for the use in the airport operations division. Purchasing from the City of Tucson contract financially benefits the city based on the competitive pricing offered. The Massey Ferguson tractor was selected based on demonstrated equipment and productivity, employee satisfaction, and fleet support. Empire CAT is a local vendor located near Casa Grande. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Bob?
Duane, was this included in CIP? Was it a CIP project?
Mr. Mayor? Mayor Protem Huddleston, yes, it was included in the CIP case.
It was, oh, okay. I just didn't see it noted in the RCA, and I was curious, but I certainly don't question the need for it. I'm sure you'll put it to good use.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no one else, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3309. An ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of a Massey Ferguson tractor for the municipal airport, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Empire Southwest LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3309 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item is I3, considering approval of resolution number 5351.
Staff recommends the mayor and city council approve an intergovernmental agreement with the state of with the state of Arizona, acting through the Department of Transportation to allow the state to acquire $177,480 in federal funds for installing rumble strips along Overfield Road from Florence Boulevard to Kleck Road. Normally, we would say to Cortson Road, but since ADOT had Kleck in the agreement, we stayed with that, the same road. There are no city-matching funds required, as this is 100% ADOT-funded project. ADOT has applied for federal funding to install rumble strips along a two-mile stretch of Overfield Road from Florence Boulevard to Kleck Road. The rumble strips were identified in the Suncor or Meth Palm Planning Organization Strategic Transportation Safety Plan. Safety improvement projects are funded through a competitive process based on the competitive cost ratio. The state will act as a designated agent for the city if the project is approved by the Federal Highway Administration and funds for the project are made available. The federal funds will be used for the project development administration, scoping design, and construction of the project, including the construction, engineering, and administrative costs. With that, I'd welcome any questions.
Mr. Powell?
What is rumble step?
That stuff when you get on the edge, it vibrates.
It makes a noise.
Okay. Have it on the highway.
I assumed that was probably what it was, but I wasn't sure, so.
Yeah, all the interstate's having to.
I didn't know if that's where people went to rumble, but it...
That's one of the biggest crashes on rural roads is running off the road, so.
This wakes people up.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, and you touched on it. I was going to ask why this stretch of roadway, why was that identified that it needed rumble strips?
So through the Strategic Safety Plan, locations were identified where there were high crash rates.
Okay.
That would fit the requirements for safety funds. And there were actually a number of roads all over the county that were in the original request, but the county pulled all theirs out. So it's just us and the city of Coolidge that are in this project. And it also has to be a road that you can put rumble strips on. A lot of our rural roads are just chip seals, and you can't put a rumble strip on those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? And people do drive fast on that road, too, by the way. All right. Can I get a resolution number, please, Gloria?
Resolution number 5351. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the state of Arizona, acting by and through its Department of Transportation and the city of Casa Grande for the purpose of acquiring funds from the Federal Highway Administration for the installation of rumble strips, stripes, and authorizing the execution of an agreement by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of Resolution number 5351 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. Next item is I-4, consider Resolution number 5352.
Staff recommends the mayor and council approve the expenditure of funds to purchase equipment for completion of Phase Three of the traffic signal interconnect system in the amount not to exceed $387,785. The traffic signal interconnect system has recently been implemented. This system provides city staff real-time access to monitor and modify traffic signals in Casa Grande from the traffic management center located at the north operations center. Purchasing the Phase Three equipment will allow the conversion of 11 traffic signals along Florence Boulevard and Pierrot Road to be converted to adaptive signal control. Adaptive signal control adjusts the start and end of green times for particular movement in real time based on current traffic patterns. This system is intended to reduce congestion and allow the signals to better respond to unexpected changes in traffic conditions. The signals are located along Florence Boulevard from Treacle Road to South Henness Road and Pierrot Road from Florence Boulevard to Cortson Road. If approved, the funds will be used to purchase the adaptive control software for 11 traffic signals, five new traffic signal controllers, nine new detector cameras, and other miscellaneous items required for installation. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Donna, anything?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Lisa?
So this is Phase Three. What were the phase, what was Phase One and Two?
So the first phase was to install radios and a certain number of signals and put the big screen TV for the traffic management center. Phase Two then is more radios and more, taking care of more signals. And Phase Three is primarily going to the adaptive signal system. We'll have future phases as we continue to interconnect all, hopefully, almost all the signals in the city.
Within what time period? Any idea? I mean, I'm sure it's hard to say based on budget.
Well, we have some funds left for this year, so we'll be probably putting some more radios in other signals once we get some more research done on where to do that. And also looking at what the traffic issues are in town. Like, we know out by Lucid Thornton Road is an issue. So maybe we convert the signal at Thornton and Cottonwood, the signal at Thornton and Peters, and then work with ADOT on their signal at Thornton and Highway 84, and maybe get an adaptive system going up there, too.
Good question. Anyway, anyone else? Thank you, Duane. All right, I'll ask for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5352. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Clark Electric Sales, Inc., DBA Clark's Transportation Solutions for the purchase of traffic signal interconnect system control components, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of a contract with or purchase order to Clark Transportation Solutions.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 5352 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is our boards and commissions, and we do have an approval pending tonight, item J-1. Gloria, I usually kind of take over on this. Do you want to do it, since it's listed under you? Or I can do it?
I'd be happy to do it. We are currently considering the appointment of Chris Hubbard to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Hubbard is being considered for the appointment to one vacancy. He was interviewed and is being recommended for appointment.
It's she.
It's a she.
I'm sorry. Did I say he? She, sorry.
That's all right. I thought that's the one. Chris isn't here tonight, is she? No, I didn't see her. Okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Chris and actually to all of our commissions and boards for their time and volunteerism. The city of Casa Grande is very fortunate to have a lot of people who give their time, and it certainly shows in all of the interviews that I have done, and Jeff's been helping here recently, and Donna and I have been doing it for the last five years, in terms of, you know, getting quality people on our boards and commissions. They keep coming out of the woodwork, and we keep giving them positions. So it's much appreciated. It's certainly, and I said it today, it's kind of how the city connects with our constituents, right, with the citizens, because they have a connection to the city through our boards and commissions, and it's a way they can touch the city, and I think it's a good thing, and much appreciated. So that's, I guess, the bottom line is that we appreciate all of our boards and commissions, and thanks to Chris for volunteering to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Her term will expire on November 7th of 2024, so I'll entertain a motion to approve her appointment.
Mayor, I move to approve the appointment of Chris Hubbard to the Planning and Zoning.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Congratulations to Chris.
And Mayor, before you went on, I know you thanked all the members, but Councilmember McBride's on, and her husband is the one that's going off the commission, so I just wanted to thank you, Councilmember McBride, if you can let your husband know for all the time he's dedicated. That's an important commission, a lot of time, so, thank you.
A lot of time. He's not going to know what to do with himself now.
So she'll find something.
I'm sure he'll figure it out. Yeah, please thank Mike for us.
I will.
All right. Okay, no, we do have an item K-1. Gloria?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, today I would like to announce that we are going to have mayor and city council nomination packets available. They will start being available on October 28. Currently, we have the mayor seat that will be available and three council member seats. Mayor McFarland is eligible for reelection. It will be his fourth term that he'll be running for. And we also have council members up for reelection are Matt Herman, Bob Huddleston, and Dick Powell. The election is scheduled, primary election is scheduled for August 2, and if necessary, a general election will be held on November 8. We will be utilizing to determine the majority vote at the primary election. We will be using the city's charter and ordinance to determine the methodology, that will be the methodology that will be used to determine majority vote. If the seats are not all filled at the primary election, we will go on to the general election. We are announcing the availability of the nomination packets, but we will come back at a later date, probably the first of the year, to go ahead and call for the election. At that time, we will be determining whether we will have other propositions on the ballot. We will hold a orientation process of the nomination process on October 28 here at City Hall. At that time, we will have paper nomination packets, if anyone is interested in it. The entire election process nomination packet will be available on the city's website. All of the forms, nomination forms, are available in PDF on our website. But we also realize that there are still people who want a hard copy, so we will have those available. This election will include, for the first time, the utilization of the state's equal system, which allows the candidates to solicit nomination signatures from qualified electors of the city of Casa Grande electronically. It is not mandatory for any candidate to have to use this. A candidate can choose to use a combination of electronic signatures and hard copies, or they can choose to do it all, hard copies. The number of signatures required to be a candidate for both mayor and council member is at least 372 signatures and not more than 743 signatures. Very important that any candidate who is interested in running for mayor or city council must file a statement of interest form before any signatures can be collected on a nomination form. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You do a good job, Gloria.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Donna, any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome.
No action necessary on that one, so we'll move right to reports. And Donna, I'll start with you, since you're on the phone.
All right. Thank you. Well, just a couple quick things. Kudos to Holly. There was a great Friday night downtown on the 8th. I was just amazed at how many people were downtown enjoying all the festivities. It was just really great. And I also had the opportunity to attend the LDS Temple tour in Mesa. What a beautiful run of vacation. It was just beautiful. And so I thank Scott McEwen for that invitation. And then lastly, just a happy birthday to our favorite cowboy, Mr. Powell.
Thank you.
And Holly is here, too, by the way. If you wanted to give a shout-out to her.
I think I just did. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. We'll start down here to my right. Matt, you want to go next?
Thanks. Yeah, just a few things. We got an opportunity last week to meet with the Arizona Transportation Board. We had a nice meeting at the Community Rec Center. It was very interesting to meet them. The mayor and Duane, I tell our traffic engineer, did a great presentation and let the transportation board know what's going on in our area, what we had planned, what we were doing. It's interesting, because they learned about our PRTA money that's being held right now for the ruling from the Supreme Court. And it's interesting, because they each represent districts, so they all have their own projects they want to do. But I was hammering home the fact that the I-10 needs to be widened between Chandler and Casa Grande, so we rallied for that very hard. And something interesting, coincidentally, I learned from Lucid is the time they move stuff from Tempe to Casa Grande over the I-10 cumulatively over the year, over one-year time, moving the trucks, because of delays on the I-10 between Chandler and Casa Grande, it cost them six months of lead time when you add it all up just from moving, in one year, just from moving product for the delays on the I-10. So I interrupted the mayor a bit and made that point, because I had heard that from Lucid. So I thought it was important that I realized that. On a lighter note, the Underpass project is looking very, very nice. If you haven't been down there, they got the metal artwork up. The painting is almost completed. They're putting the sealer on today, it looked like, to protect and keep the stuff looking nice. And now I'm sure they're going to start on the interior part, the mosaic, very soon. I'm looking at Gloria, because she knows the schedule better, but it is looking, if you guys haven't driven through there, it is really nice.
It looks really good.
And lastly, this Saturday, October 23, is the Youth Commission's annual Fall Day of Shredding sponsored by First American Credit Union at 1001 North Panal, 9:00 a.m. Can bring five boxes for free. Donations are always accepted for any more. And thanks to Public Works Department, they're getting out some containers for us, and they're going to be helping us out with that. And it's a big day for cleaning up in the town as well, so there'll be a lot of stuff going on. But bring your shredding out. Help the Youth Commission from 9:00 a.m. to noon on 1001 North Panal at First American Credit Union. So, thanks. That's all I have.
All right. Bob?
Yes, sir. I was saddened to see that former councilmember Al Guggenberger had passed away, saw his obituary in the paper this past week. And just kind of a thank you to him. I always respected him for a lot of things, but there was a time when the police department was in desperate need of some dispatchers. And Al got behind that cause and managed to push that through and got us three dispatchers that year. So, Al, if you can hear me, thank you for that. Appreciate it. And on a much lighter note, under the heading of cutest things I saw all week, Friday, I was out for my lunch break, went through the drive-thru at Dairy Queen, and who do I see but Mr. Powell and four little girls that I'm sure were granddaughters and friends or whatever. I knew that was Mr. Powell's birthday, and I thought, that's one heck of a grandpa right there that takes the kids to Dairy Queen on his birthday. So, good work, Nick.
Thank you. We'll be going after the meeting, too.
Yes.
You promised now, so.
Mr. Powell?
Okay. I'm really concerned with water issues, as you know. Right now, one of the greatest challenges we have in Arizona is the two reservoirs, Lake Powell and Lake Mead. And the water levels, if they continue to plummet, both reservoirs... And the water levels, if they continue to plummet, both reservoirs will fairly soon be in Deadpool, and if you don't know what Deadpool is, it's basically where the water's right at the bottom, you can't generate any electricity or any energy at all, and you can't even get, get what's at the bottom out. And with what's happening, it's not getting any better. And the, I think, I think truthfully, we need to look at again, and I'm prejudiced, but the floodwater harvesting could really bring some water into those two reservoirs and, and get us back to where we should be with water in Arizona. The, the only large amount of floodwater that could possibly flow enough water into both reservoirs would be the Mississippian flood mode via two diversion dams. In 2019, they did $19 billion worth of damage along the Mississippi River. This project would, would be a, would be one that would be done by the government, but we really, I'm hoping they will, they will look at it and study it. The, we don't, we don't have enough water coming from anywhere in Arizona to fill or do much with the reservoirs, and the lower they get, the, the lower we're gonna get. The, the only large amount of floodwater that could possibly flow enough water into both reservoirs is floodwater diverted from the Mississippi in flood mode via two diversion dams in Davenport, Iowa. The floodwater would be discharged at Rock Springs, Wyoming, into the Green River, which flows into the Colorado River. The Colorado River would run in much higher as the lakes are able to catch the water for Powell and Mead. And I just, just want to say, desalinization, I, I, I know some of the things that they've described that are very concerning is, number one, it's energy intensive, number two, it increases fossil fuel independent, or dependence, number three, it increased ground, greenhouse, greenhouse gases, number four, exacerbate climate change, number five, a huge threat to marine life, number six, hazardous waste, and number seven, environmental damaging. And it's exceedingly expensive to try to get that, make potable water out of that, and nobody's gonna irrigate, no farmer's gonna get potable water to irrigate with it, and so I, I just, I just hope we keep pushing. We've got, we've got feasibility studies that have been ordered from the state of Arizona, from the House and the Senate, and we also have it from the Conservation District. What I want to find out is, are they doing anything about it? Is it just sitting on a desk somewhere in, in Washington DC, or are they really giving it consideration? But as I say, it, it's not a good place we're in right now, and we certainly need to take action, but thank you, Mayor.
All right, Lisa?
Well, Pastor Juan Hughes was here, and he represents the Faith Alliance, and I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, of this group and some of the activities they have coming up. They have a blood drive this Saturday at the Promenade, so if anyone wants to give blood, if you can go out there, the Casa Grande Alliance is also doing a health fair, where they're gonna have all different services, healthcare type, you know, booths and that type of thing, out at the Promenade. So hopefully you guys can get out there. It's from eight till two o'clock, and then they also have an education summit on November 18th, and that's with Dr. Gonzalez, Dr. Battle, and Dr. Elliott will be talking about, you know, education and everything going on in the, the three different systems. So that is at the church on Casa Grande Avenue, and I can't remember the name of it, right there at the four-way stop, but that, that's gonna be 11:30, a lunch meeting. And as far as the homeless coalition, and I, I like to bring this up because, you know, this issue comes up all the time, and so many people don't realize everything that's going on, and this, these meetings are just so busy, you know, and there's so much content, there's more and more agencies and people that are collaborating and getting involved, and I just, you know, Mary Lou Rosales does such a good job on coordinating everything and getting everyone together, but it just keeps growing and growing, and we just, we know we need to do a better job, you know, getting the word out, and, you know, I know that the topic came up at the last meeting of someone that was interested or needed services, but, you know, the Resource Center is open there, five days a week now. It's actually Monday through Thursday, eight to five, they go to lunch from 12:00 to 1:00, and then Fridays from eight to noon. So their activity is really picking up, they have, serving a lot of people there with, you know, mail, you know, they have different agencies that are coming in now, more and more are coming in, so it is open, and I, you know, I really, I think that's where you want to send people if they don't know where to go. But I know with, as far as the utilities, with the moratorium expiring on October 15th, there's a lot of information or requests on utility assistance, and so Mary Lou just sent me an email this evening that said that you can apply on the DES website or your Community Action Resource Agency, which is CARA, on their, on their website for utility assistance, because there's a lot of people that are in need now that, that this has lifted. So, you know, so there, there's, there's so much going on there, there's still showers on Saturdays, every Saturday at the Living Water Church, which is across the street from St. Anthony's School. Those are from 6:30 AM to 11:00. Now that it's getting cooler, they're gonna make it, have the showers from 9:00 to noon on Saturdays. They have plenty of donations, blankets is where there's a, there's a high need at the Resource Center, so if anyone wants to know what they can donate, blankets is, is something that they can use now that it's getting cooler. So, so just kind of wanted an update on that, and if, you know, we talked last week or last meeting about Lucid, and my friend Richie Rosales here, of course, showed me the video that I, that we made, my husband and I. So, so if you guys haven't seen the first ride video, my husband and I are in it, we're in the video, so.
That's right.
That'll be going out, so they have local people in there, so that's good. I know, Mayor, you sent me the message, too, it was funny. It's like two seconds, but still. So that's it for me.
You're talking it.
I know. I know.
All right. Mr. Lavender?
Well, I just want to offer my condolences to the family of Fernando Corneo, who recently passed away when he was vacation Hawaii. It's a huge loss for our community. He had, was a board member for Against Abuse, he was just taken over as president of the Rotary Club. He was very involved in the Cesar Chavez Committee as well as other endeavors. I recently saw him at the crime night, and he was excited about moving to his new location, so just want to keep him and his family in our thoughts and prayers.
Is a loss. Anything else? All right. Well, just to kind of give a little bit of a recap, we, last week, we had the Rural Transportation Summit that the Suncor Metropolitan Planning Organization hosted, along with the Central Arizona Governments, that was over in, in Maricopa. So it was a well-attended event, considering we're just coming out of this COVID, and we kind of cut back on the numbers, and, but, but good information was shared. We also had the ADOT board there, so we got a chance to interact with the, the ADOT board, talking to them about our infrastructure needs. We also hosted them on Thursday night, we took them to Lucid and actually gave them a tour of the facility and got them a ride in the, in the Lucid car, which was very impressive, by the way. It's the first time I've actually ridden in the car, so. And I had Mike Boyke, and if you all know who not Mike Boyke is, but he's the head of their construction and operations here in Arizona, and he likes to drive fast. So I describe it as a rocket ship with four wheels, and I was with a, a, actually, an Air Force commander who was retired, and he was in the backseat and I was in the front seat, and when Mike said, "Put your head against the, the, the headrail," you know, the headrest, and then when he punched it, the commander said, "That has more G-force than the F-16s that I used to fly." So that gives you any idea on how quick those things are. I thought, I thought that, that statement from, you know, somebody who flies jets.
You didn't speed in it, though, did you?
I wasn't driving.
Oh, okay.
So I was safe. And then we did host them for dinner at our rec center, which was really nice, got a chance to show them what was going on here. Duane did a great job outlining, so thank you, Duane, for your work on that and putting that together as well. And then we had the, the ADOT board meeting here in the chambers the next day on Friday, so it was, it was a full week of activities. Met with a lot of different investors last week. Everybody's interested in Casa Grande, I can't tell you how many people and calls we get. I only get a fraction of them compared to what staff gets, and I'm getting buried. So it's, it's absolutely crazy, all the activity. This week, we're even meeting with the Canada Arizona Organization, and then we're gonna go visit the Jomi Engineering Facility, which is the old Bear Building. It's a Canadian company that support industry for Lucid. Lucid has announced and is beginning to go vertical on their Phase Two, which is 2.8 million square feet now. No, they don't mess around, so that whole, there's about 2 million of it will be assembly plant and receiving and warehouse, and then they have another eight, 900 square feet that will be a stamp plant, which will be on the north side of the current facilities, but a total of about 2.8 additional million square feet. They expect that to be completed in a year. One year.
They move fast, though.
They get it done.
They do, they do. And then today, I had the opportunity to represent the city at an I-11 Coalition Meeting. It was an interesting meeting. They're gonna try and move forward with their, their Level Two Environmental Impact Study, so they're looking for federal funding for that, but it will be coming through. We're still also waiting on ADOT to give us the, the final preferred route. They'll narrow it down from the 1,000 feet wide to a, more like a 200-foot wide path. And so, and then today, I, I was on a Zoom call with, with some of my favorite third graders at Ironwood. They asked a lot of very tough questions, and we had a good time. It was funny because they're, they're, you know, these are, these are third graders, right, and these guys are asking questions and, and really trying to figure out how government works, which I, I'm still trying to figure that out myself, so. But it was, you know, learning about responsibilities of local government, and then how local governments are made up of mayor, and some communities also have city councils. So it was, it was a lot of fun, and I want to thank your teachers for, for putting that together, so it was, it was good. Now tomorrow morning, I get to go to the high school and take on high school students, and they're gonna interview me on what the mayor does and what council does, so we're having the civic lessons all over town this week, and so I'm looking forward to that. And that'll be at Casa Grande Union High School tomorrow at 8:00. And I know there's a bunch of other stuff, just to remind everybody, COVID is still here, so please be careful. The numbers are coming down, but they're coming down very slowly. This, this last wave is more of a flattening versus a, a straight drop-off, which, which means we, hopefully we're reaching some herd immunity here. But again, be careful, and if you get an opportunity, please get vaccinated. One last thing on building permits, and we just got September's in, and we're at now 1302 through September, that's 1,302 new home permits, and that's a 50% increase over last year. So continue to see big numbers. We are literally behind Maricopa by 100 building permits, so that's my benchmark. All right. Any, any other comments, questions?
I have one.
Halloween activities.
McKenna, why don't you come up here and shake hands with the mayor, so you can brag in third grade?
We can do that when we close.
Okay.
Yeah, I won't go anywhere, I promise, I'll stay here. Yeah, Halloween events, have we, I don't even have, I haven't seen a list of them.
Yeah, that's so.
We're doing something at, at the park, aren't we?
From 10:00 to 3:00, was it? Noon to 3:00 downtown, and then.
Noon to 3:00.
Paul Mason Sports Complex is on Halloween night, correct?
No, it's on Friday, the 29th.
Oh, Friday, the 29th.
Okay, Friday, the 29th at Paul Mason Sports Park. Starting, what time, Steve?
Five o'clock, I believe, but I have to.
All right. Check our website, I know it's on the city's website, so check that out, and, and also check out downtown. Let's give a little, little love to our, to our downtown area.
Lot of love.
A lot, well, a little love, a lot of love.
Yay, Main Street.
All right. Okay. Think there's anything else, so if there's, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and the city council meeting is adjourned.